Okay, call to order Board of Education Study Session, May 14th, 6 o'clock. Lisa, do you take attendance?
All board members are present, virtually.
Okay, public comment, there's nothing, public comment for the first public comment section. So we're going to go to the agenda of the study session. I'm going to hand it over to Pat to talk about our end of the year virtual school events.
Thank you, Paul. So K through 12, we're planning quite a few end of the year virtual celebrations. Couple of days ago, there was a link shared with all board members. As the events are scheduled, they'll be populated in there. You'll be able to go on and you can see what building, what event, what we're celebrating, and then the link to the meeting. So feel free to join in as many as your schedule will allow. Thank you.
So anything, anything specific, Pat, like just highlight a couple of things. Like I know the big thing is the virtual graduation on June 7th. Virtual Seniors Honors Night, I think is this week as well. So I don't know if there's like two or three main highlights that's coming up. You know, the virtual graduation is, is big, but you know, I mean, you know, for the people out there that may have not seen some of the correspondence from Charlie High School or posted on social media. So maybe want to highlight a couple of big things that are coming up.
Right, oh good. Yeah, so like you said, the virtual graduation is huge. We already have Athletic Honors Night and then the Scholarship Honors Night is coming up. But really kind of focus now on the K through 8 program and what's going to happen with those celebrations. So there's a lot in the works for that. Nothing's been, only a few things have been finalized. So as we continue to work forward, the goal is to get them all done within the next five to six days and put them all on that website. Or all on the Google Doc that was shared with you guys. And we're also looking to see if the governor is going to relax some of the restrictions. So that maybe we can do a few in-person events, whether it's elementary schools driving up to wave goodbye to the teachers and things like that. So a lot of that is still in limbo until we have more direction from the governor. But I look at the most recent article that was published about an hour and a half ago on MLive. And it looks like most of the restrictions will come down, including retail, which would mean we can do some smaller gatherings somehow with social distancing in our buildings in June, which we are hoping our goal.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments? I don't see anything in the chat room. So I'll move on to the bond update, bond 2020 strategy and timeline.
I'm sorry, one, one quick question. Did you say that link was sent to us today?
No, I think it was probably roughly four to five days ago, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Pat, if you could just, this is Howard, if you could just put it into the Novus Agenda. There's no link in there right now. If you could just have Rebecca add that to the Novus, that would be appreciated.
Okay, all right, will do. Next thing, just an update on our strategy regarding the, the bond. Pat?
Paul, you kind of broke up, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you can just go through the bond. I don't know if you guys can hear me? Okay.
Yep, I heard you. So looking at the latest, I'll try to present it as well. Can everyone see that okay?
It's not presenting, it's not presenting, Pat.
No.
Can you hear me?
We could hear you, it's just it's not, it's not presenting on the screen. So I have printed off, you know, and I could start talking through that. You know, finalize a new plan, MATH, primary focus. What you sent out to the board. If you want, if you have it in front of you, if you want to just read through it if you can't present it.
This is the election timeline, just to confirm.
Yeah, the election timeline, if you could bring it up, yeah.
It's coming up now, I think. He's got, he's got his screen up.
I'm having issues. Dave, can you bring it up real quick?
Let me grab it, yeah, let me grab it.
Thank you. And we'll work through that a little bit. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, so while Dave brings it up, Pat, if you want to kind of just talk through it, if you have it in front of you, I have it in front, if you want, if you want me to talk through it, whatever's easier.
It's up now, Pat. It's up, Pat.
There you go, yep.
All right, great. All right, so looking at kicking the bomb back off and making sure we engage our community. But knowing that we need to maintain our focus on our continuous learning plan and then plan for the summer and the fall. So we're looking at kind of getting it started with a short video that I made on Monday, followed by a letter on Tuesday. And then you can kind of go along with me looking at May 18th or 19th. While working with BIF and the BHSTV to put out a couple of different programs. And then really picking up in June.
I can't see it.
I'm sorry.
I cannot see it.
I see it, it's in, it's in my box, it's in my, when I have a it's in the corner there. Famously.
All right, I'll keep going then. Dave, can you scroll down some? So in June, we'll pick up in-person meetings if possible. And then looking at June first, stop right there, Dave, thank you. More BIF and BHSTV segments, and then having a postcard sent out. How to get information about the bond, making sure that everyone's informed. And then having the news restart on June 1st. Information shared via the Senior Center, the emails mid to late June. Second BIF Radio, second segment, second week of June. And then kicking off with more like a coffee chat or some virtual Zoom meetings. And we would need to make sure that we have everyone register ahead of time. We've read all the stories about Zoom meetings and some inappropriate things that can happen. So there'll be an opportunity for people to join, but they'll need to register for that. June 12th Outreach to the Media, June 12th, the postcard, the what, what are we looking to do? June 18th or 19th, doing Facebook Live. If you remember when we did that before, we had really good feedback. We had four or 5,000 views on Facebook Live. Again, going back to BHSTV through the week of June, absentee ballots come out approximately June 22nd. And then our second virtual meeting on Zoom with that required registration, June 22nd. Scrolling down, some of the other ideas for June we talked about. Ask residents to share stories from when they were in school. Band performances by students in parking lots, giving them the opportunity to perform. And then going in July, again, Facebook, two additional postcards, two additional Zoom meetings. And then trying to come up with this My Y 2020 campaign. And then the signage that will go with it. So people could share their why and why they feel the bond so important. So it's kind of a slow re-engagement of the community because we don't want to take our eyes off the prize. Which really is educating our students first and foremost. We're in the business of teaching and learning. We're not in the business of passing bonds or raising money, but yet it's a huge priority with everything that was going on before. And moving forward in the future and the type of spaces we need. So that's where we're at and that's our draft of what it would look like to re-engage our community with the bond moving forward.
I don't see anything in the chat room. Thanks, Pat. So with that, we can move on to the Superintendent Evaluation Next Steps. I don't know if you want, if Dave, I don't know if you have the email, but, okay, sorry, before Cynthia's, who's going to present, Howard, do you have a question?
Yeah, Pat, the postcards that are being mailed out. What is the mailing list? Who are we going to be sending those postcards to?
So we talked about sending it to all registered voters who voted in the last election. We've also talked about sending it to all community members within the district. So no final decision has been made on that at this point. Do you have thoughts on that, Howard?
Well, one, one subset of that you might want to consider is absentee voters. Obviously, this is going to be a huge absentee voter election because of COVID-19. So we can get, you can, the district and you can purchase the absentee voter list. So something for Sharon to consider.
Okay, thanks, Howard.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? No? Okay, Cynthia? So if you want to walk through it, I don't know if Dave can, if it's in Novus to pull it up. Probably, probably it would be, the best would be the email. So you know, maybe Cynthia would just want, everyone should have the email that, that we sent out. So if you want to walk through that.
Well, let me just give you a little background. I began talking with Pat back in February before COVID came on the, on the on the horizon. About Superintendent Evaluation, being sure he could take the opportunity to take the MASB Superintendent Evaluation Training Program. So he would understand, you know, what, what it's all about. And then, you know, sort of talk with him through about the gathering of evidence and the various pieces of Superintendent Evaluation that has been our, our process. So tonight, what we would like to be able to do is agree on the timeline. The Governor's Executive Order said that we did not have to do a Superintendent Evaluation this year. But Pat, in, in an effort to, I think, help himself get full feedback, would like to go forward with completing one through by the end of June. And then we have discussed in, if we wish to, we can move our whole process moving forward for future years, move our process again to, to process that would finish by the end of the calendar year to start fresh in January on a new cycle. But for this time, we could sort of feel like this is an opportunity because we know that both Jennifer and Lisa, as well as Pat, have not been through the whole process before. This is an opportunity for us to, I think, build ourselves as a team and help, help Pat get some good feedback in the process. So I know that everybody received the MASB Superintendent Evaluation Tool is part of the materials for this meeting. And as I said to Paul and Pat a couple of days ago, I was one of those people when I was in high school that I really hated to use the appendix. But in this tool, the appendix for the tool is tremendously helpful in understanding the whole process and some of the detail. So if you haven't had a chance to look at it in detail, in Appendix G, there's a whole list of ideas for evidence that I pointed out to Pat that would be items that could be used as data to support our evaluation on the questions that are asked in the professional practice. All the questions that MASB provides. And then there's Appendix G and H, which, so those are pages 25, 26, 27. And then it talks about goals in the Appendix F on page 24. For closer understanding about the open phases and closed phases of, of the evaluation. That is detailed in the Appendix D, which is on page 21. And so those are pieces that really will help us. If you look at the tool, as you get down to the scoring part, you will see how the tool weights different pieces of evaluation. This year, again with the Governor's Executive Order, the student growth measure is deemed to be not weighted if we were going to do this. And as having spoken with Paul and Pat about this, my suggest, our suggestion is that we remove that as one of the criteria in this particular evaluation, not going forward for any future one, but for this particular one because of COVID and the, and what's going on with our students. So that is 40% of the weight in the evaluation under the MASB tool. And so the other sections of the evaluation tool normally are the parts that are about professional practice and our goals. And Paul and Pat and I had some conversation about that earlier this week. And we are suggesting that we change the professional practice piece to 60% of the evaluation and the goals to 40% of the evaluation. And we can, just want to be sure that everybody understands and thinks that those make sense. So the process would be then tonight, we can agree with, with Pat what we think is the appropriate data, evidence to, for him to, to gather for us. And then his plan is to provide a, a file for us on May 28th. It's not going to be presented, he's just going, that will be the date that he will provide the evidence to us. And then we are asking for a closed session on June 3rd at 6:00 PM. Where we will walk through and discuss all of the evidence and other items of the goals process with Pat. And then on June 11th, again, a new, a new meeting. We would like to have Jay Bennett from MASB facilitate the scoring process for the tool. He is not available for us that evening. Only way he could do work with us on June 11th would be, assuming this would be a virtual meeting at 3, from 3:00 to 5:30, a closed session for the scoring. And then finally, on June 25th, the scores would be read out and an agreed upon statement on the evaluation would be presented by Paul. I saw Lisa had a question.
Yeah, Lisa had a question, yep.
Okay, Cynthia, I just wanted you to know that even though Jennifer and I haven't been through and we did take the MASB virtual course on it, so we have a little bit of familiarity with this. I, I guess my question overall is, and it, maybe it's to Pat, I don't know. Given that he has less than three months prior to this crazy environment we're now in and that this requirement has been waived and it is time consuming and that it requires an additional couple of meetings. Is this really something we want to prioritize? Because I'm fine either way and I'll take direction from Pat, whatever he recommends. But, you know, given that we have a bond coming up, we have to figure out how to market it and to inform people virtually, which is a huge challenge. The Continuous Learning Plan, which is, you know, the, going really well, I think, but also an incredible learning curve with that. Is this really something that we want to take the time to do in this kind of formality right now?
Lisa, are you looking for my feedback?
Yeah.
So I, I'm very comfortable doing it. Both Cynthia and Paul have been, you know, great, talking to me about the process. Paul's even said, you know, we don't have to, this is not a must-do. But I also think we need to do some of those normal routines. And for this being my first time, I would appreciate some feedback, just like we talked about the strategic plan. We can continue to kick a lot of things down the road. But we also need to continue to move forward and just kind of, and I'm also looking for me personally to have some type of normalcy in this superintendency. Nothing's been normal since day two. An evaluation's normal. Going for a bond, to me, is normal. Talking to Tina and Todd and Kelly today about budget and budget decisions, that's normal. Working on a summer program for our students to make sure they have opportunities to continue to learn during the summer, summer, that's normal. I mean, I know we're getting to the strategic plan in a minute. But if we don't really start working on that and getting it approved, it's going to be 2021. It expires in 2023. And at that point, my opinion only, why even bother them? Why even have it? We, we've got to do what we need to do and keep moving forward. I share with Cynthia and Paul, not going to have, you know, 245 pages of, you know, in a document, in a PDF you can scroll through. You know, I'll try to compile it, make it as short as possible, but sure, but at least let you know what I've been working on, what I'm doing. And there's so many additional conversations that will kind of come out of that. The, oh, I didn't think of that, the what-if. I, I think it's, I think it's important and I, I was for it. Like I said, Paul, if I said, Paul, I have no interest in doing that. I feel confident him and Cynthia would have said, oh, great, you don't have to, no problem, we can move on. So this is more coming from my end of wanting to get feedback and improve and learn than it is any pressure from the board whatsoever, just so you know and everyone else on the board knows, since you weren't in those conversations.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I, I guess, just a quick follow-up. Is it this formal process that you're looking for or can we give you feedback in a less formal way that, that sort of cuts some of the I mean, to, some of the major components of the MASB evaluation require pieces that even if there hadn't been, you know, a pandemic, you haven't been here long enough to be through the cycle of I guess that's my, my point. It's, I mean, I have, I'm not weighing in either way. Just curious if, you know, if a less formal kind of feedback would suffice.
Well, I would say this is going to be less formal because Cynthia and Paul have cut out, as part of our group, cut out the whole, you know, looking at the student data piece. So that piece is completely gone and that would have been huge and a monumentous task to try to put something together at the last second. Sorry, Cynthia.
Yeah, I, I would say, Lisa, also, I think we also saw it as a, as a team-building opportunity. And there are, if you look through the tool and a number of the questions along the way, there are going to be parts of it that either, there hasn't been enough to, to really weigh in on. In which case, you know, it's kind of like a thumbs up, we'll just keep moving right on past that one. And then the things that are more meaty that we want to have some more dialogue about will take more time on. We, we don't have to, you know, spend a tremendous amount of time on every item if it's not something that really makes sense for us in this particular time around.
It's like the feed cycle on the washing machine.
I, I guess, well, you could say that. I mean, it's, I mean, for the ones who look through the MSAB tool, the tool, I mean, the, the five areas, pretty much, we're going to look at his goals and then we're going to look at governance and board relations, community, staff, business and finance, instructional leadership. Including his three goals. So, you know, I mean, I think it's more so, like Pat said, give him feedback. And then as a group, you know, how we move forward. So I think it's good.
Through the rubric, even if it's in an accelerated fashion, might spur some, some good conversations.
Right. But we separated intentionally the session on June 3rd sort of to really get into the weeds of, of the goals and evidence and, you know, that we want to have more conversation. And, and then the 11th is the really more formalized process that Jay Bennett will help facilitate for us. We, we thought it would be helpful for all of us to have, particularly this first time around as a new team, have an outside facilitator just to help us each, every one of us have the opportunity to look at things as an equal and help us move through the process and would help us going, going forward. Howard, do something?
Howard, question?
Yes, Cynthia, looking at the timeline that you laid out, for May 28th, I see that there are two options. Could you explain a little bit about those two options and what decision, if any, we need to make tonight on that?
The, what Pat just wants to do is he just wants to be able to provide the digital file to us on that date. We're not going to have a separate meeting just to discuss evidence. We have plenty of other regular meeting that needs to be done that night. So he's just, that's going to be his date for providing us the evidence for us to have time to look at before the 3rd.
So we're not going to do option two, Howard, to answer your question. That was.
Okay, so that was a trial balloon that we're not going to do. We're just going to go with option one.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry. I think, I think that's, I think that's it. Good job. Thank, thank you, Cynthia. Thank you, Pat. Good job presenting. Jennifer?
Sorry, so we, we talked about how there's not going to be a large artifact collection cycle. Have you already determined what, what information you're going to use? Does that something we need to discuss at all?
No, that's a good point. I mean, I know Pat tonight is part of today on the timeline. I don't know if you want to present or you want to come back in a couple of days on what your artifacts are. Do you have an idea what they're going to be from the appendix?
Yes, hold on one second.
There's only 100 things to choose from.
Right, so from the appendix, number three, you want me just to read them off?
Sure.
Three, five, eight, nine.
Pat, could you, instead of, could you read off the title of what, what that thing is instead of us trying to follow up with the numbers?
Would it be helpful if I just had it in the update tomorrow?
Yeah, you could just.
With the number and what it is?
Perfect, that's fine.
Yeah, you can put it, yep, that's fine.
Okay, just to say.
It would be helpful probably to Pat if, you know, if there is something that a board member is looking for, now is the time to, to make that suggestion.
Or you could email Pat separately and make the suggestion if you want time to think about it.
Well, but it, it needs something that we all, we all agree with. It's not like each board member thinks of something. It's something, this is a, something that we do as a, as a group. This is not something you, you ask for this and I ask for something else.
Yeah, no, or I'm just saying if, if people, you know, right now, just don't have time to think about it and if it comes up, I could quickly circulate and, I mean, and just, and just make sure. But the only thing, and I think, Pat, you've, you may have said it earlier. Yeah, we're not looking for a 245-page PDF of all these things. But if there's, in this technology age, if there's evidence that you've done that we can either watch or read as opposed to you recreating, like if you've had meetings or correspondence that we could quickly go to. You know, I mean, like, like we all want at this point, Lisa's point, we want to make this as useful but as easy as possible with everything else that's going on.
I, I would like to suggest that we, that Pat include maybe a condensed version of the Continuous Learning Plan. And so for all of us to get a sense for comparison's sake of, you know, some of the feedback and requests and context that he's been making with other districts, asking for our help and for our advice. I mean, to me, that's one of the major things he's worked on. So if I were evaluating any superintendent at this point who had been there, you know, only since January, that would be the first and foremost thing I would look at, would be their Continuous Learning Plan. So, you know, I, I'm not sure if other people have a sense of what's floating around out there in other districts and where we compare, maybe some brief overview. Even just by way of number of requests that Pat gets for, from other districts for feedback or for help developing their own plans.
I'll include some of that in the document for the 28th.
I, I agree with Paul that this should be, you know, make this as simple as possible considering the situation that we're in. Realize that we can use this as a learning opportunity because the evidence, the categories of evidence could, should be, per the MASB tool, is done at the beginning of the cycle. So we can use this as kind of a trial balloon or, you know, a, a beta test. And then when we get to the end of the year, in November, December, we start laying out the, the beginning of the cycle for the 2021 cycle. We can, at that point, provide or come up with a list of evidence that we will be looking for in the end of the year 2021. We can uh, at that point, uh, provide or come up with a list of evidence that we will be looking for in the end of the year 2021.
That's what we want us to transition to. You're exactly right, Howard.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay, good. With that, uh, no other questions. We can move on to the strategic plan timeline discussion. Uh, Pat?
Thanks, Paul. So I made a couple of different edits um, to the document. Has everyone had a chance to see those yet?
Yeah, they got, I I reset that out. So that was sent out. Everyone has that.
In particular, moving the Thursday, June 25th and Thursday, July 9th dates. Uh, moving those to August, our our major focus where we have to spend a lot of energy right now is going to be on, A, our summer program, and then what is the fall going to look like? Um, whether we're back, whether it's a hybrid model, whether we're online learning. And then I also changed um, some of the things as far as the target setting. Um, one added, you know, in collaboration with the superintendent, I removed all two. And then number three, the superintendent research and identify exemplar districts with a purpose by identifying best practices. What we don't want to do is say, here's something that's great and just try to mimic it. We want the ability to go out and find all these other great ideas and then add our own twist to it and make it ours. I think a great example of that is the continuous learning plan where you say, well, you took a little bit from here, we took a little bit from there, we took a little bit from here. Then we added all the work that was done by LST and all the teachers and put it together and made our own package continuous learning program. Um, that was really robust and, you know, three weeks of work and talking to school districts from 17 different states. So I'm more comfortable rather than saying, we want to be like that. I want us to say, we're going to take all these ideas and then we're going to make it our own and come up with something that's unique. Number four, I added in collaboration with the superintendent as well because as a team of eight, we should be doing everything in collaboration. And then down the glossary, as far as metrics, we need to look at size, demographic, demographics, funding, college readiness. There's some other key performance indicators that we can look at or look into benchmark. At the end of the day, my opinion is we need to decide as Bloomfield Hill schools, what are we about? What are we going to hang our hat on? And those, once we make that decision and we decide that we need to do what we do better than anyone else. Not, we need to do what other people do almost as good or as good. We need to do what we're going to do and we need to do it better than anyone else.
Thanks, Pat. So just, just to kind of looking at the timeline for today. Um, today, we're just going to review the draft of the strategic plan, mission, vision. You know, um, everyone should have had the link to what was done a while back and then discuss and approve the process that Pat just laid out in terms of this timeline, the education target setting. Um, so with that, I don't know if anyone has any, we're not really approving anything today. We're going to prove stuff on the 28th. So with that, does anyone have any questions or comments? Jennifer?
I'm having trouble locating where I, the, if there was an updated, updated version of of the strategic plan timeline. I I think I printed one out a couple of days ago. Was something sent out today?
It it's in Novus. If you go to.
It's attached to the big packet. Okay.
It's attached in Novus. If you can go to it.
It's in Novus and I, and I emailed it out uh, this morning. Um, so I I emailed that out and then I emailed the link to the Bloomfield Forward Strategic Plan Draft. So you should have it. And I I think, yeah, I think you're right. A couple of days ago, from that, what was sent a couple of days ago, it got updated. Uh, and then I reset that out this morning. Any other questions, comments?
What are we supposed to be doing with this?
So the only thing right now is what Pat just went through. Um, we're okay with his educational target setting for the, for the meeting today. And then all we're doing is really just kind of validating, um, you know, this timeline, we're comfortable with it. And then probably at the next meeting on the 28th, we're going to approve the, the next thing on, on the agenda for this timeline is on the 28th, approve the mission, vision, and then discuss the measures in goals two through four. That's on the, on on the attach, what I sent you guys earlier this morning from Bloomfield Forward Strategic Plan. So there's, on that is the vision, mission, goal one, goal two, goal three, goal four. Right now, nothing, 28th, we're going to approve the strategic plan, mission, vision, and then discuss methods, um, the method to measure goals two through four. So if there's anyone have any questions on the vision, mission that we need to go through before we approve it on the 28th, then now's a question. So Howard had a question, then Cynthia. And then just put, put in the chat room if anyone else has any, so I can just call on you guys accordingly.
Pat, I uh, I want to thank you for your explanation of that exemplar district uh, research that you'd be doing. Um, I think the purpose of the exemplar research really could be broken up into two pieces. One is identifying who, you know, who are the exemplars in the categories, in the, in the metrics that we identify. That's really what the board is responsible for, is working with you on setting reasonable targets. The best practices, that is really more of a strategies. That's something that you and uh, the cabinet need to work on. And in this, it would be for with with LST uh, of of the strategies that you would uh, come up with. And then um, potentially then, you know, working with the BIC committee on on uh, working on seeing whether those strategies are the right strategies or not. But that's really not the board issue. The board issue is working on the the metrics. Um, and then the targets, which we would get from the exemplars and the uh, best practices. Because you're absolutely right. We don't necessarily, you know, what, and I had this in the auto industry all the time. We sent people over to Japan and said, well, they're doing this. So they, the people came in and exported those or imported those ideas and plopped them in our plants and they never worked. So we need to Bloomfieldize things and make sure that we just don't carbon copy what people are doing. But but shooting for those targets of what those exemplar districts are achieve, are accomplishing, that's the, that's what the board's responsibility is.
Jennifer, you had a question?
Sorry, I'm really challenged. Okay, so June 11th, when we're discussing metrics. I mean, that, that's a big football field full of things. Um, which, you know, we as non-educational experts don't necessarily have experience in prioritizing. Pat, are you thinking that when we sit down on June 11th, like, you're going to bring, like, say, I don't know, a grab bag of maybe 15? And we, and we discuss the merits of each? I'm just not sure how we go about this exactly.
Yeah, I would see it as me collaborating with LST, with finance, and then um, with HR because we have, you know, whether it's strategical, number one, two, three, or four, and bringing some ideas forward, like, here's some ways that we could go about measuring different things and just kind of having that conversation about it. And maybe there's that aha moment where seven board members say, you know what? That's a great goal. We love to see that. That makes a lot of sense. I know we'll be bringing forth our targeted math because that's our equity effort that LST is working on, uh, which I think, and I hope we all can agree, is priority work right now based on the scores of our socioeconomic students that are disadvantaged, based on our African-American and other minority students. That that is a priority focal point for us, no matter what. Uh, but yeah, that's kind of the intent for that day.
Lisa? I'm sorry, Jennifer, did that answer your question or?
It it does. I mean, I I guess I'm being on BIC, I'm specifically, my mind is going to goal area one where there's just, there's a lot of different yardsticks, right? So.
And I would, I would think, Pat, and before I go to Lisa, that, you know, we do have two, we have three committees, right? We have, we have BIC, FFLA, and policy, where maybe some of this stuff, you know, the HR stuff can go with policy, the um, instructional stuff can go in BIC, and then the finance stuff can go in FFLA. You know, and kind of vetting it out, some of that stuff, if, you know, again, you know, we could talk more about that before it gets to that June 11th meeting. Um, but that's one thing we can do.
Yeah. And Paul, the only other option there or or thing we have to consider is communication.
Yeah, and that can go in one of the committees if we wanted to, we'll split that up. So the committee meetings can meet before that June 11th, kind of talk about some of that stuff. Lisa?
Okay, um, I I had a chance to look at the um, the draft that, which is where we left off at our last meeting. It's, I, it, my understanding from the last time we addressed the strategic plan, which was, I don't know, 18 months ago, maybe, was that we were taking um, the strategic plan as 60-plus community members worked on. And we had finished three out of the four goal areas. We were only trying to get goal area one to conform in terms of language. A- and then we were going to be done. So I don't know why we're sending stuff back to committees to rework.
I don't know for sending stuff back to committees. I think it gets maybe uh, to Jennifer's point, more so when June 11th, the metrics for the goals, not necessarily all the the stuff that, you're right, that, you know, that's on here. You know, the strategic plan, vision, mission, and the goals itself, that's 60 community members. I don't think that's going to change. I think it's the the metrics that we're going to be discussing more specifically.
Where did they go in the plan, though? I mean, I I thought we were done with three quarters of it. There, where where are we inserting metrics into this document?
A- as I, as I understand it, these are the build outs, right? So these, these are the whats and then eventually the hows. Like, if you look at goal area one, it's got objectives one through seven. So the, these things I think we're about to discuss would be under parsing those bullet points out so that they get addressed.
Cynthia?
And and.
I'm just sorry. Hang on, Howard, Cynthia, and then you can go.
So I am in agreement with with Lisa here. Um, we, we have a strategic plan that we were just trying to get the goal area one to conform with the other areas. The, the objectives under the goals are usually um, sort of part of what the annual goals are um, following uh, uh, out of that in the, in the, each year following. But right now, what we need to get is to get those final goals in a, in uh, shape to be finished, and that shouldn't be that big of a deal. My question is, uh, you did mention um, vision and mission. You didn't say core values. And I just want to say that um, at agenda meeting, um, we did talk with Pat. Um, and uh, I think so, our, my colleagues will recall that we sort of had put a hold on moving forward and the conversation about our core, uh, any change in our core values until we had our new superintendent um, with us. And I don't believe that that is, that that we need to be changing those wholesale while we try to get the strategic plan in a for, in a, in a finished process. I I think that Pat ought to be able to take, you know, the rest of the year or maybe even next year to move forward. He's got, you know, obviously pandemic is, changes the calendar for a lot of things. And um, I think, again, we need to give ourselves and him grace to deal with the hot tickets, like, how do we start school in the year, beginning of the year? Uh, uh, but the, the format of approving the community um, informed strategic plan that uh, has been developed, that we accepted the draft of, is what we need to form, finish. And we don't need to, um, you know, we don't need to get into the details of, of the objectives um, to be able to finish it.
Lisa, you had a question?
Actually, I had a question.
Okay, I didn't see. I, Lisa, okay. All right, Jackie, then Lisa, then Howard.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say that I thought the reason, it's kind of before Cynthia was saying that, is that I thought that one of the reasons we delayed was that we wanted to make sure to give our new superintendent time to um, put his uh, input into our plan as well. And I want to know, you know, and so my understanding wasn't that we were going to just go forward with the plan necessarily exactly the way it is. I, my understanding is that we were going to make sure that Pat had a chance to um, bring forward things that he feels that need to be emphasized or things that needed to be, you know, any type of input he wanted to surface into that plan. Um, I thought we were going to give him that opportunity. And um, so I'd like to hear whether or not he has had that opportunity. Um, is there, like, how has he been able to um, uh, really under um, understand the background and also make sure that his uh, input is in the plan?
So Jackie, I appreciate that. So thank you very much. So within the way the plan is currently constructed, I'm comfortable moving forward. And then my big push is going to be when we share some of the metrics and what we want to use, what we want to measure. For example, I just, in, it's very ambiguous the way it's set up where we can focus where we feel is most important. We need to do something about the math scores at the high school. We can't talk about it. That has to be addressed right now. And LST and Margaret Schultz, they are fully invested in addressing that. Charlie and his team are on board. That could be one of the metrics we use for measuring. Even before I came to the school district, meeting and principal meetings, and knowing that in Bloomfield Hills at the high school, the math scores were an issue. So we need to figure out what's going on, how can we best serve our students? I know we've got some wonderful, tremendous math teachers, but somewhere, there's not a connection being made. We need to figure out what it is and then support those students. So working with cabinet, we'll go through. We'll look at, you know, all the things that are priorities right now to move Bloomfield Hills schools forward based on the strategic plan. And then we'd like the opportunity to say, you know, here are some things we're thinking about where we really need to focus. And here's some great work that we've already started or we can start doing that can move us forward. And there might be 12 things and you guys say, yeah, do, you're already working on those 12. We really want to measure these four right here. We really want a lot of information on these four because we know, hey, keep talking about math and that's a priority. And how do we make it more accessible? Why don't we have more minorities in AP Stats, AP Calc, AB and BC? Or in Diff EQ and linear algebra? Why, why do we have that group of minority students that aren't moving forward in math? Right? That needs to be addressed. And that's not a Bloomfield Hills problem. That's the United States of America problem. And how do we make sure that we still have females that are in the STEM classes going forward? Is it compared to our peer districts, which we already know, we attend meetings with our peer districts? Do we have enough females registered compared to our peer districts? Are we ahead of them? Are we behind? Okay, let's say we're a little bit behind. Well, the districts that are ahead, how are they encouraging females to be in the math and science higher level classes? Are they doing something differently? How are our counselors selling those programs to our female students at the high school? What are we doing in elementary and middle school to promote that as a K through 12 system to make sure that our female students, and these are just examples, but yes, long answer, short. Um, within the framework that so many community members worked on 18 months ago, we can move forward and pick and choose and bring multiple options. If we're talking about HR, Kelly's been working on great things as far as how do we increase, you know, um, diversity in our classrooms, you know, which is a big push. And everyone's, a- again, everyone's trying to do that, right? So you come up with a goal. I've talked about this before. We have our goal. We have our plan. We have our action steps. And then you go and you execute. If two or three years down the road, we weren't able to, you know, hey, we weren't able to increase 4% um, minority um, minority teachers in the district. Okay, here's what our goal was. Here's where our plan was. Here were our action steps. We did all these different things. And unfortunately, maybe we come up short. But we need to really be focused on how we're going to go about doing that. And I'm comfortable, we can bring those different things forward. Um, and you'll find priorities that align with what we're thinking as well. But to go back, Jackie, and start over at this point, if I'm a community member, I'm just going to be honest, if I'm a community member and we're starting from scratch, don't ever invite me to do something again.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
So in, in between those two things, um, I think, Jackie, where you were going with this, there, there are seven, seven, three and three bullet points under the four goal areas. There, you see any glaring omissions or conversely, are any of those something, you know, we don't want to alter what the community has come up with, but are are any, is there anything in there you think is superfluous or not appropriate um, before we dive deeper into it?
Right.
Lisa, I think Lisa, then Howard, had a question?
Um, well, Cynthia, Jackie, and Pat really uh, cleared up most of it. But um, I, just to sort of synthesize what everyone's saying, um, I I would like to, you know, if, return to where we left, which is goal area one, just getting it to some kind of format that looks like it flows with the rest of the document, like. just getting it to some kind of format that looks like it flows with the rest of the document like we said we were going to do. And then, you know, I'm comfortable, I like the idea of measurables too. And obviously Pat does because he just went on about how they're missing. I'd like to, like Cynthia said, give him the time and the leeway that he would needs to come up with the measurables. And then he can present them to us. And if we think, okay, you should have one more measurable with this goal or one more with this area, whatever. I think what we should be working on, Cynthia said, are core values when the time comes, if and when the time comes soon. But I don't know how that relates to starting over or even, you know, sort of taking a step back with the document we already have in front of us.
Well, the document, Lisa, just to, you know, so this is the reason why Jennifer had a draft three days ago and a new one came out. This has been looked at and analyzed and this is sort of Pat's format in terms of the timing, in terms of everything. So this is, you know, signed off by Pat, you know, and I'm sure what I'm hearing is, you know, we're willing to be flexible. But, you know, similar to, you know, Jackie's question to Pat about the vision, mission, and what's there. You know, I mean, we want, you know, Pat to come in and feel comfortable with both, with what was already done by the community, which he said, yes, and then this timeline.
And I know that there's board members and Pat that would like some concrete measurables. I don't know where they fit into the plan, if they're part of the actual strategic plan or if they come in a different format and a different document that Pat works on. But that's kind of where I like to take a step back because this is way outside my knowledge base and expertise. I don't know how to set measurables. I can tell you what would be desirable to me personally in, as, in terms of what results I'd like to see. But I mean, I have to go back to school before I know how to get us there. So I'm going to defer to Pat to create all those measurables and tell us which ones, Pat and his team, and tell us which ones would work best for Bloomfield. And that's why I'm a little leery of some timeline with dates unless Pat's fine with it, in which case I'm just going to back off.
Okay, so it's Howard then Cynthia. Howard, you had a question in the chatroom and Cynthia?
Sure. First of all, no one is talking about anything, Lisa, about changing any of the goals. Everyone is perfectly, as far as I've heard, I haven't heard a single person say that we want to change the goals. We're looking forward. We're not looking back. But a number of us were involved in the strategic planning committees over, you know, August through November, I think, of 2018 with Kay and Suzanne. And as we were getting close to the end of it and doing the brainstorming, a number of people in the community and some board members said, well, how, you know, we're going to, what are the measurements? And Kay repeatedly said, your job committee of sixty people is not to do the measurements. That will be done by the board and the administration during the first quarter and the second quarter of 2019. And everyone said, well, we'd like to do, no, 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 said Kay, that's not the way the process works. That will be up to the administration and the board to work out afterwards. And everyone said, okay. So that has never really happened. There was, I think, some, there was a, LST did an attempt at it that Todd came up with in, I think, April or May of last year. I just brought this up in FFLA with Tina and Kelly, and they don't have anything as far as I heard yet. And Pat was there and Paul and Mark. So I think what we're doing, Lisa, is the more detailed step of what was initially intended by Suzanne and Kay back in the winter or the fall of 2018, which is finalizing the measurable piece. And I think what Pat's presented here in terms of the one, two, four target setting for education is an excellent, excellent way to do that. But we need to do that piece. Now, whether we actually approve the strategic plan without that and do that as a supplemental document or incorporate it into the same document, to me, it's six and one half and dozen the other. But we do need to have some sort of measurables on how do we know when we have a goal? What does the organization want? Where does the organization want to be and when does it want to be there? And if you look at any of the goals right now, they're nice words, but there's no way to really say, have we accomplished those goals or not? So these metrics for all four goals will allow us to do that. So this was part of the plan back in the fall of eighteen. We're just finalizing that piece of it.
All right, well, as someone who has this strategic planning, that's not my understanding. My understanding was not that the board and administration would do measurables. It was that administration would and it would not be inside the strategic plan. It'd be a separate document.
Well, everything related to the strategic plan.
Hey, one second. Cynthia has a comment.
So what is typical is that under a strategic plan, annually, the board works with the superintendent to look at what objectives under each goal area are going to be the focus for the year ahead. And then, as Howard, you know, we're supposed to set SMART goals to measure progress towards those goals. And that's what I would think that as we are moving forward in our, in our use of the strategic plan for achieving the goals that we all agree are important, that we, each year, you, the board will work with the superintendent to identify what objectives under each of the goal areas are the focus for the year ahead and what measurables do all we all agree are how we're going to know that we are making progress towards those objectives for, under that goal. That's typically how it has, MIB identifies how you would move forward. So that's where you would annually, because you need some flexibility over a long course of a strategic plan. You may, there may be new ideas for measurable you want to focus on. So this gives you the ability annually to work with your superintendent as a team, identify what you want to focus on for a year ahead and how you want to measure progress towards it.
Howard?
Cynthia, let me ask you, how many strategic plans have you worked on in your career?
I'm sure nowhere near as many as you, Howard.
I have worked on thirty. Every single year of my business career, I've worked on a strategic plan. What you do with a strategic plan is you set the goals, but then also you have measurables. Where do I want to be at the end of the strategic plan? You are absolutely correct. Then you break that apart. And you even said this in a prior meeting about a week or, you know, one or two board meetings ago. If I, as an example, a strategic plan for Lisa is she wants to retire by age sixty. To do that, she needs to have X number of million dollars in her bank account and so much in social security that she's going to get. So she, instead of waiting to age sixty-seven, can retire at age sixty. So that's the target that she sets. I want to have X number of million dollars in my brokerage account so that I can live in the lifestyle I'm accustomed to. You then say, okay, that's where you want to be at age sixty. So what do I need to do this year to accomplish that? Do I, can I afford to go on vacation, forgetting about COVID and all that? Can I afford to, and it's not just retirement. I want to send my kids to college. How much do I need? You set that long-term target and then you work year by year saying, well, how had, what do I need to do this year? And then you, once that year is done, then you look back, said, did I accomplish that? What I set out to do? Yes, maybe I overachieved it. The next year I can do a little less. Or maybe I didn't achieve it because the stock market was down. I need to do a little bit more. But what you do is, and again, this is the way personally you would do a strategic plan or business-wise, you would do a strategic plan. You look out in the future, say, where do I want to be? And then year by year, you're absolutely right. You set a goal for that year based upon the subset of, you know, what do I need to do this year to accomplish that long-term goal? You don't sit there and only look at a twelve-year, I mean, Tina does a five-year projection of her finances in our budgets. And we set our current year budget based upon that five-year projection, but then we do the details in this one particularly here. Our strategic planning and our goal setting for Pat and the board should be no different than that. And again, I've done this, this is the thing that I did for my entire career.
Yeah, I think in hearing what Pat, Pat doesn't necessarily disagree. I think that's, you know, he's going to look at some of the metrics, the measurables down the road, you know, discuss it in the committee meetings. And I think at the next meeting, just to kind of summarize, you know, we're going to, as a board, approve what the community did in terms of a vision, mission, and the goals itself, which was, which was sitting there, getting to Jackie's question, Pat answered it. He's comfortable with this and now he's just going to, you know, take that and put in some metrics and then, you know, present that later on in the middle of June. So I just want to summarize. Anyone have any other questions or comments? Lisa?
Okay, so what are we doing, then what are we supposed to be voting on at the next meeting?
The vision, mission, and the goals that we came out of from the strategic plan meeting, which is, you know, it's the attachment I sent you earlier today. So those, not, you know, so those, you know, the vision, mission, and goal one, two, three, four. Not today, not today, the 28th, at the board meeting, the 28th, that we'll be voting on that. So that will be, and then the next couple of meetings, including our committee meetings, will be, Pat will be working on metrics and objectives for the, yeah, correct, yes, everything in bold. Vision, mission, goals in bold.
Then can we talk about the vision and the mission? Because that's not something that we did in strategic planning. So I feel like we have more leeway in kind of making it, fine tuning it.
Okay, all right. Howard, then Jennifer?
Okay, thank you. Now, the other piece of this, and Cynthia alluded to it or mentioned it a little bit, is the core beliefs, which, quite frankly, this is one of the things that Suzanne and Kay sort of left out of the process. And I talked to Rob Glass about this in the fall of 2018. And he was following the process that Kay and Suzanne were giving to him. But you always, you know, you typically would do core beliefs and values at some point in the process. And it quite frankly should have been the first. This should have been the first thing before we even started on the vision and mission. But the document that is in Novus right now was developed by a collaboration of Cynthia, Jennifer, and myself in the spring of 2019. This was a year ago that we've been, had this as a draft. So I can, I can believe, I can understand, and at this point, maybe we approve the strategic plan as was written without the core beliefs and values and without the measurables, as we just talked about. But close there too, in the timeline, we need to get this out of the way. We need to do this, not just out of the way, but this has been on our to-do list for a year now. So we need to, it's just one page. So we need to look at it. We need to wordsmith it. We need to get opinions. Again, it was done by three people as a collaborative and we changed words here and there. But the other four of you, Mark, Jackie, Lisa, have not been part of, and Paul, we're really not part of the process. And we really need your input into it because that will help guide the development of these measurables. Because what it does is it lays the groundwork of what do we believe? And if you read the Governance Core, which is another thing that we need to have, you know, some additional meetings with Michelle. But the moral imperative is the first chapter in that book. It is the bedrock that everything else in the plan is built on. We can't, we really should, I shouldn't, I can't, we can do whatever we want. But we should not defer that into another year or so. We've already had as a draft for a year. We just need to get this out of the way. Thank you.
I know people are in the chatroom. Jennifer, I know you had your hand raised before.
Oh, yeah.
Well.
Yeah, so feel free to say no because this, if you think this is too much tinkering. But I was one of a very small handful of people who wrote the first objective of Goal Area One. I don't like it. I don't think high level of effective research means anything. I just want to change, not change researcher inquiry, but just change some of those modifiers so that it doesn't sound like gobbledygook. And I was wondering if we think that's okay or not okay. I would like it to say, here, let me, I would like it to say, student-centered learning, emphasizing effective research and deep inquiry throughout the curriculum. So I don't know if that's okay.
You could, I mean, send it on, I mean, again, you know, you could, I mean, again, that's our discussion. If you have questions to some of the objectives, I think the bullet points, vision, mission, well, and the goals. And again, that's what we're talking about today to approve at the next meeting. So I think next was looking at the chatroom. Pat, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, I agree with Howard. I'd like to spend some time talking about the core values, the vision, the mission. Like, there's some conversation to be had there.
Okay, Cynthia? You're on mute, Cynthia.
Yeah, I would like to reinforce. I think we need to take the time on at least the core values. And I think we could do more wordsmithing on the vision. I think that we could have done better on what we came up with. But I, my question was, on the Goal Area One, we all know that the structure of that goal area is very different than the other three. And so I thought one of the reasons we were holding off, and I think Lisa already said this earlier, was to try to get to a point where we had some parallel construction so that they were like goals. But I think there was some concern in changing it because there was a very, very carefully wordsmithed when those, when that was being created. And I guess what I was hoping was that maybe the administration or someone would come forward with a goal area so that the four goals look like a cohesive piece moving forward.
Cynthia, can you explain what's different about one? I mean, I see that the verb tenses are a little different in the objectives, but what else is going on there?
So I cannot read the document at the same time. I'm not where I have any paper printer. Got one screen to work with, so I can't look at it while I'm speaking with you. But my recollection is that the grammar, the structure of the sentence is different in the way that it is put together than the other areas. And I'm sorry that I can't be more specific right now. But if you all are happy with it, you know, that's fine. That was a concern in my mind. I guess a question I am also asking, so I'm, are we setting aside the conversation of core beliefs to be worked on as the year progresses? That's what I'm trying to find out. That's one question. And then the question is, are we all happy with where we are with the vision, mission?
So, and I know Lisa had a comment, but getting to your other question, Cynthia, I think we are spending more time separately on the core values. So that's, so that's, you know, we have to have separate discussion, you know, I got to think through that with Pat. So that's yes. And then two, and I think Lisa brought it up and Lisa's going to have a comment now. I think vision and mission, if I recall, and, you know, I remember it was a blur. I think there were a couple of people and I was one of them, and I think Jennifer was another one. We're in a room putting, and Cynthia, I forget, or whatever. It wasn't the eighty people in a room putting this together. It was a subset. So I think we have some flexibility where we're not going to offend the eighty people on all the work they did if we did wordsmith some of the vision, mission. Lisa, do you have a comment?
Well, that was my understanding too.
Well, that was my understanding too. I, I have the, the draft in front of me. I just want to also be clear. I'm glad that Paul, you and Cynthia just went through this. So if we approve the strategic plan with the proviso that between now and the next time, the language in Goal Area One. To me, Jennifer, how it's reading, I, I wasn't in that Goal Area group, so I don't know. It, it almost seemed like maybe there might be more bullet points that came out of that group. So it's not that. But to me, it's just some of the, you know, I'm comparing it to Goal Area Three where everything is in very short bullet points and very easy to understand. Some of this just seems a little wordy to me.
It was.
Consistent with the rest of the bullet points.
Yeah, Lisa, it was, for whatever it was, because it was, it was a much larger group. We broke into subgroups. And each subgroup came up with an objective and we, you know, so we, we, we put it all together. And you're right, I think Jennifer, I think Cynthia's point and Lisa's point is that if you look, I have it in front of me too. Goal two, three, and four, I don't think it's the goal itself, it's the sub-bullet points. The other ones have boom, 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 boom bullet points. This has like seven objectives, so it doesn't flow with the other ones. So we probably need to tidy that up. And, and being part of that group, if we tidied up all the objectives to make it in line with the others, I don't think the, the group, the 80 people would be offended by that.
No, I understand, just like what Cynthia said, which is that I thought, now, this was quite a while ago, but I thought we tasked the administrator who was the person assigned to that Goal Area Group to kind of look at the document and make it read cohesively. So, I, I mean, I'm happy to approve it once that happens. If that's done by next month, great. I'm happy to approve it because we had already talked about. And we, I think we approved it in draft form. So I thought it was like 99% ready to go. In terms of the mission and the vision statement, my understanding was exactly what Cynthia and what you, Paul, said, you know, that there was maybe some people that worked on it. I don't even know if they got it into the final form, or if they were going to work on it some more, but I, I know we have leeway to, to do stuff with that. I, I wanted also to say, I'm just maybe bringing a really hard time imagining us being able to do this or core values remotely. Some things just don't lend itself to that. I, I don't, I, I don't think we're as off-track timeline-wise, maybe as other board members do. I don't want to be presumptuous. But I don't know how we can do this without having like a, around-the-table dialogue. I just think we need to, personally. And last thing I wanted to say, this is just to address something that Howard said, about long-term, five-year-plus plans. I don't think that strategic planning for schools can be compared to business. I just don't. Because board turnover is every four years. So you might not even have the same people making long-term plans. You don't want to bind brand-new people to goals set by their predecessors when it's nothing that they would want to do, nor can you bind them to it. So I, I think, yes, obviously have a long-term vision for the future, but Howard, you know, you said dismiss what's going on with COVID. Stuff like this comes up, not this particular, this is huge, I get it, but every single plan has, you know, curves and bumps and things that off, that derail it and offset it. I think you have to be able to plan for the unforeseen. And we have to have flexibility in the measurables. What if we list measurables and one turns out to not be a very good measurable? I want to give the superintendent and his team the leeway they need to give us the best measurables. And then they can find what they are. I don't want to do that. I don't feel qualified to do that.
Howard?
Okay, a few things. Responding to Lisa first. One of the problems that the state has had is that there is no education policy. There is no strategy. And Governor Whitmer is trying to do that. What you don't want to do in any organization, whether it's a business or a government, is change based upon the whim of whoever happens to be in office for that two years. That is exactly what you don't want to do, because the parents are there from kindergarten, are there for 13 years. And the kids are there for 13 years. The, the strategies and the, the objectives of the organization should not change based upon whoever happens to be in the board seats at that time. Number one. Number two, and that's been the, and that's what Massachusetts does right. In terms of they set a strategy back in the 1990s and they stuck to it, D's or R's, it doesn't matter. And that's what Michigan has done wrong. So that's number one. Number two, absolutely, Lisa, none of this is in stone. This all can evolve. Obviously, COVID-19 came out of the blue, and you go with the flow. So, you know, there's lots of flexibility, but you still want to have, you know, have your eyes on the prize of where you want to be. But how you get there and the twists and turns along the way, absolutely. Things are, that's what a board does, is working with the superintendent and adjust accordingly based upon what's happening on the ground. To the core beliefs and values. We need to, we need to be, make it, we need to have a sense of urgency. But at the same time, it is a, it's a one-page, very dense document with lots of words that we all need to discuss and really get comfortable with the words. Because this, the only organization that really can do the core beliefs and values of the district is the board. That's our, one of our jobs. So it needs time for us to analyze it and get comfortable with it and really look at each one. And I think that, you know, it's a full page of words. But at the same time, we shouldn't just kick the can down the road. We absolutely, this has been a very productive meeting right now. The virtual meetings work very nicely. I think it can operate. We don't have to wait until we get into the real world or the physical world again, because that's kind of, who knows when that is. I think we should have, you know, take, maybe there are like four or five subsections there. Maybe we take a subsection which is a quarter of a page each board meeting between now and the next two or three months, or maybe, whatever, but we, we, we work on it. Such that by the time we get to August, September, whenever, we actually have something that the, the, that, as I said, it can be used, the bed, the bedrock of the entire organization. Because the last time we've done core beliefs and values was, as Cynthia said, you know, back in the 1990s. And the district and the, the, the teachers and the principals and the parents and the community can look and say, what does Bloomfield really believe? And the core beliefs and values is that document that they would go and look at. Right now, they're looking at a 20-year-old document.
Mark?
Very quickly, number one, I agree with everything that Lisa just said. And second, in response to many things that Howard has said, what we're talking about can't all be quantitative. Not everything can be quantitatively analysis, analyzed. A lot of this is qualitative analysis. We were talking about core beliefs, values, in particular, kids and education. And I don't think we can put numbers and to everything that we're doing here.
Jennifer?
Yeah, so just process question, because according to the schedule, at our next meeting in two weeks, we would be approving values, mission, vision, strategic plan, the two pages. So are we going to, as Howard just said, are we going to start fleshing out values tonight? Are we going to just talk about mission, vision tonight? Because, because we really, we're in this a year and a half already. I, I do think we need to, to go forward.
And I guess, you know, I, the point is, and, you know, and I, I had a discussion with, with, you know, me and Pat, you know, we talked about this in detail. He, he wants to move forward. He wants to get all of this approved. But, you know, he wants the board to feel comfortable with it. So if the vision and mission, as an example, we still need to wordsmith, and we're not ready on the 28th, we're not ready on the 28th. But, you know, I'm happy to, you know, again, the reason for this is to kickstart this and do what we need to do. If we're comfortable with goal in bold, one, two, three, and four, as long as Learning Services works on the objectives. That's, you know, for the, to make it in line with two, three, and four, we'll approve whatever we're comfortable with. But I think Pat and Pat's comfortable with us moving forward best we can, you know, with, you know, getting all of this into a point that we're all comfortable, including himself, you know, with what these words are and what we're going to do in terms of executing it. So at the next meeting, if we're not ready for vision, mission, we're not ready for vision, mission. Maybe we just approve goals one, you know, one through four. But at each meeting, we're going to carve out a time to, to talk about each of these. And if we have to also carve out time in our committee meetings, that's the only other time that some of us meet, then we'll do that as well. Cynthia, I think you had a question, right?
So I, I guess my question that I will put mostly to Pat is regarding vision, mission, and core values. Because I think, we, as we've talked about this in the past, we wanted to wait for Pat to be with us before we moved forward on those items. And when we created the core values, we had a, over 200 people who were, came together to, to give input for that. And it was a, a, a very inclusive process. I think it's really important for Pat to have the time to think about how he wants to have, have it developed as something that will be enduring. And it's, the core values we have today are not just about students, they're about adults and the whole community role and how we fit together. And what, how, they're intended to be bedrock in, when we have to make decisions in hard times, which we may have to do going forward. It isn't, it's, it's focused on students and how we use our resources to support them, and how we support each other emotionally as well, and safety. And so it's important for us, if you look at other core values from around the nation, and Lisa, Jennifer, and Howard and I, we've all looked at, at them from hundreds of districts around the nation. And most of them do not go beyond addressing needs of only students. They're mostly directly belief statements about students. They're not about the whole school community. There's nothing wrong with that. That's a good thing. But ours is, is, is much more universal. And I think that's an important conversation for, for the board and for the, for Pat and the others to consider. So it's, it's a much broader conversation. And I think it's important, I, I really appreciated the time I spent with Howard working on it, and I know Jennifer's put time into it. But I really think, we, we really ought to allow our new superintendent to be very much involved and include others beyond the board in that process. I really think that's important, and he can do it any way he wants to. But I, I don't think it's something we need to, we should be rushing through. We have something that's pretty good right now. We can live with it until we come up with something we think is better.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy, Cynthia, again, to, you know, look at a best practice of coming up with it. And, and I appreciate you, Jennifer and Howard, spent a lot of time jump-starting, having a start and have a conversation. I, I'll take away a conversation with Pat. And then, you know, maybe Cynthia, me, you, because you've been through the past core value process where there was 200 people. Maybe we have another call and we can go through what's the best practice and how we move that forward going forward. So we can do that. Lisa?
I, I think it's something that, I, I really think it's something that we don't want to be doing virtually. I really think it's, it's, it's more touchy-feely than that. I guess that's, that's a bad way of putting it. But I, I really feel like there's, there's something more that needs to happen that's really hard to achieve virtually in a, in a conversation.
Lisa? Thanks, Cynthia.
Uh, yeah, I mean, sorry, I put my question before I heard, but Cynthia said, but yeah, I, I'm having a hard time personally imagining how discussing the mission and the vision, mission statement and the vision and the core values can be done remotely. I, I think I, I'd be challenged by that. I think that, you know, we're doing the best we can with the sort of round robin question kind of thing, but it, it not really an authentic dialogue back and forth. And I think we need that to be able to get the best product at the end of the day. I forgot something else, but I forgot. See, this is why I just yell it out when I think it. But I, I, I don't know. We have huge events coming up. You know, we, we're, we have no idea when we're returning to, you know, in-person school, how that's going to look. We have no idea what kind of cuts we have coming our way. We have no idea if a huge bond is going to be passing or not, which huge in terms of the impact it will have on our district, not necessarily the monetary amount, which is sizable, but I meant, you know, with the impact. When we wait to see what the outcomes of some of these unknowns are, that will help me be able to understand what, sort of what my core values are going forward. I mean, I don't want to have to address huge cuts and what, where we cut first, but if that's the reality, then that's something that we're going to have to, you know, come back to our values as a district to decide where those come from. We don't know what those are yet, you know. I, I hate to say table it until, but I, I really think that would be my vote.
Actually, I'm curious, you know, because now I'm hearing, you know, that, and again, the point of this was to jumpstart this. And, and, you know, and try to see if we can get some of the stuff that the community worked on behind us. But if I'm hearing you, Lisa, and you, Cynthia, you know, do we wait until we go back? I don't know, Jackie, do you have a viewpoint on, you know, it's, it's draft now. It, I mean, and, you know, it's trying to take it from draft format to final format.
Well, Paul, I just want to clarify to you, the strategic plan I'm fine with, because we were like 99% done with that. I'm talking about the new, you know, the core values and the mission statement and the vision, those three documents, or those two points in that one document.
Yeah, so, so at the next meeting, what I'm hearing is we're okay to vote on the goals, one through four of the strategic plan. Hold off on the vision, mission, and core values until we're able to meet as a group physically. And then with that, you know, the goal's still, Pat, you could still work on, you know, some measurables to present to us, you know, during your timeframe within this. Which is, which is fine. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do that, and I'm happy to wait. We have a lot, you're right. We have a lot of other things that I know Pat and his team are working on. And then we could, we could work on wordsmithing, vision, mission, and the core values when we're, when we're back all together. And we will be back all together. Won't be in a month from now, so.
We can have measurables presented to us from the administration at any time. I mean, if they're ready and they're, they're ready to go, and they want to share those, great. I don't think we need to wait on core values necessarily to have those.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine. I'm sure, you know, I'm not to speak on behalf of Pat. I'm sure he's fine. He has a lot of other things he's working on at the moment. So.
You were asking me, Paul.
Yeah, Jackie.
I, I had the one concern that I think Pat addressed, because my understanding is we, we, we delayed because we wanted our new superintendent to be included. And he said that, you know, he's very comfortable with the strategic plan. So I don't think there's any reason to delay that, as you mentioned. And so what I'm hearing, though, is that some of the board members have some issues with the vision, mission, and goals, sorry, the values, right? So if that's the case, then it does seem that we're not ready to vote on those, right? So.
Yeah, we're not ready at the 28th. We could, we could vote on the strategic plan, the goals, but the vision, mission, and core values, wait until we're back physically together at Doyle to have that, you know, to have those discussions with Pat. That's what I'm hearing. And I don't know, Mark, if you have an opinion. Either way, I'm just trying to get a sense from everyone what you're thinking.
I agree with Lisa.
Okay. Jennifer?
Could I just put in and ask that people study them and work on revisions and suggestions? Should, should they have them? I mean, for, for me, I'm, I'm fine with the will of the board. I feel like we've had these things in our pocket forever. And we may as well take the time and talk about them now, if Pat is ready to do so. Because I think that's really, you know, Pat, we, you're full partner in this language, but if you haven't had time to digest it, we, we should definitely wait.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Any other final comments? Before I see if there's any public comment, which, I don't know if there are. Okay, no more comments. Corey or Dave, is there any public comment?
No public comments at this time.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Before we adjourn, no, sorry. I, I think Jennifer was asking, I, I just, I don't want to adjourn unless I'm I'm sure that I'm understanding. I think she's asking if we're ready now to have a discussion about some of the things instead of tabling everything, or at least discuss whether we're tabling it or not. I mean, I, I don't know that we've resolved the issue. I mean, I don't know that we've resolved the issue.
Yeah. And maybe I misinterpreted, I think with Jennifer, and I don't want to misinterpret you. I took Jennifer's comment as, yes, we might not be able to physically meet for another four or five months. But in this time, if someone has some wordsmithing ideas on the vision, mission, and then even some ideas for the core values, you know, we could still work on it. You know, we could still add input to the point when we do start meeting, you know, maybe we'll have some of that flushed out. Jennifer's, not necessarily discussed right now, but over the next month or two. Is that fair of what you were saying?
Yeah, I just want to keep chugging along, whatever that's like, right? I mean, we got to get this over with.
Cynthia?
So just in terms of process, I'm wondering if Pat may want to take the opportunity over the next couple of months to consider if there is an additional process for more input on core values that, whether from our staff. Because what we have, the document that Howard and Lisa, Howard and Jennifer and I worked on, you know, is our work from looking at documents from districts across the nation and trying to incorporate what we, the best of what we saw elsewhere with sort of where we have been and what we have currently, and tried to come up with a hybrid. But a question I want Pat to have plenty of time to consider, and I'm not asking him to answer at this time, is if that is how he wants a document of our core values to be developed going forward, or whether he would like to have engagement with a broader sense, part of our community to develop those core values. So that's a question I think we need to all consider.
Howard? I don't know, Pat, did you want to respond to that? Or I don't, do you want to make a comment for Howard?
None at this point.
Okay, all right. Howard?
Just want to process it.
We have, I agree with Cynthia that as long as, if we're not, if the consensus of the board is that we are, we wanted to do this where we're actually sitting in Doyle at some point, then to Jennifer's point, we shouldn't waste the time, or not, we should take advantage of the time that we have to get some additional input. Now, we have to be careful of analysis paralysis. And having, you know, we had 60 people together for a strategic plan in 2018. We don't want to, you know, recreate that for the, at this point, for the core beliefs and values. I mean, it could have, would have, should have done it all back then when we had the people. This is not the kind of thing that you send out as a survey and say, hey, what do you guys, you know, 40,000 voters, what do you think? But I do agree with Cynthia that as long as we have our staff, both cabinet and administrators and teachers, that we could send what we have out so far to them and get some comments back from our, you know, 500 or 1,000 employees and get some input from them. That, I think, would be a perfectly good way of utilizing the time between now and when we actually, as a board, put pen to paper and actually start working on it.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, with that, I will call for adjournment. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.